We're ready.
There it is, all right. It is 9:59 and we will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop to order on June the 20th. Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for being here. And we were, I'm not just going to trudge through all of this. We're going to work through all of this. Before we do that, do we have any speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right, very good. All right, Julie, I think we will probably turn this over to you. And I had asked you the question if your, if your crystal ball says that we will probably be in about the same place that we were last year with numbers. Anything you might want to say to that before we start?
Sure, so I can just give you a little bit about our process as it's, I'm going to say changed, just been revised, I guess, this year, just based on what we've seen the last few years. And we had two years of COVID that we had no idea how to do a budget. And then last year, with all the inflationary pressures we were feeling, we did see a lot of increases in '23, which, you know, we've talked through extensively in budget and then throughout the year. Inflation's flattening and we're going to talk a little bit about that. So kind of our direction to departments was try to keep your operational budget within what we did for '23 with the assumption that we're not going to see 15% to 20%, 25% increases anymore, with the exception of personnel, which we kind of subtracted out for their operating budget and then we worked through personnel after the fact. So that's where increases were. If I had to say where we are over last year, we're about 6%, which is really reasonable considering last year we were at about 15% over '22. Keep in mind, '21 and '22 were pretty conservative because we were budgeting for COVID during that time and not really knowing what the impacts to sales tax and those things were going to do, which surprisingly, you know, came back really with windfalls. And there's, we're going to talk a little bit about that, too. So everyone was very responsive, worked through their departments, I would say, very responsibly. The requests that they had outside of normal operating were reasonable requests. And we've talked about, you know, our new kind of secondary phase of assessing assets and facilities and those kinds of things. And we've had a big group of people that's helped us with that. And so there was a little bit of shift between what really belongs in an operating expense and what really is an asset. So with the idea that operations should be fairly level, you shouldn't see big ebbs and flows in operational budgets. So that's kind of what we're trying to shift to is so that anything that's outside the norm, your normal operating stuff, is part of asset replacement so that we have it on a long-term schedule. We know when that's coming and, you know, if we can't fund it, that we have to talk about how we're going to fund some of the critical needs and those kinds of things as, as we've talked about planning ahead and planning for the future and moving some money around to have restricted potentially for maintenance and those kinds of things. So we're going to talk through a lot of those things as we go through this today. So, and anytime, I mean, open discussion, definitely not a formal presentation. I do have chiefs here to talk about some things regarding public safety. And then David is going to talk to us a little bit about streets. And so we do have, you know, pretty much full staff. So if there's anything that, you know, I can't answer or something specific you want to know about a department, that's why they're here. So happy to dive into that if we need to. So I think we'll have plenty of time discussing general fund today. And then we'll also talk about asset replacement on the general fund side. And then when we do water and other, we'll talk about water fund asset replacement because two different pots of money, so. Okay, so we'll get started. So first, just kind of a little overview, budget calendar in the process. We'll talk about the economy, preliminary revenues. Keeping in mind, it is way too early for me to try to project things like property tax and sales tax. Keep in mind that sales tax for '23 will be received all the way till November. So when I give you estimates, you know, even though our fiscal year ends 9:30, because of the way sales tax is collected, we do still collect a partial month of November gets moved back to this year. So a lot of things to consider that roll forward that we just, it's really hard to project. So preliminary expenses, some information on streets and public safety things. Trina will talk about debt and asset replacement. And then we'll just do a summary and stop us anytime and we'll, I know that I tend to go fast, that's just my nature. So stop me if we need to slow down or have a discussion about something specifically. This is just your updated calendar. You guys see this all the time. Today is the 20th, I hope. And so we'll be talking about general fund today. Our next workshop will be on July 18th and that'll be primarily water, but then all the other special funds that are, you know, a little bit smaller and easier to get through, we'll do on that day. The 25th or before, we will have a certified property tax role or an estimated role. And we've talked about that a little bit in the past. So Kirkad has to have 95% of all values certified before they can provide us what is called a certified role. So only one time that I know of, they provided us an estimated role and I think that was '21.
Four days early?
Yeah. Well, we got, we had to get the estimated because it wasn't certified yet because of the number of protests. I think that was '21. We'll file the budget on the 31st. And then August 8th, we'll present the full budget as it's proposed, along with a resolution to set the public hearings and things like that for the property tax rate. And then the 22nd and the 12th will be first and second reading of both of those items. So at any time between now and then, you know, you want to talk about specifics, let me know. Happy to, you know, meet with whoever. We can talk through, you know, little details if we need to that gets deeper into what we're going to talk about today. Okay. So looking at inflation, if you look at the arrow there, that's where we were this time last year when we were talking about budget and it was really scary. I think for all of us, just with the unknowns, it was going up and not down. And so we were anticipating the worst for '23, some of which actually happened. And so, you know, we're on the water side, we're seeing anything from 20% to 40% increases on anything petroleum-based. Fuel prices have gone down, so that some of those prices, I'm not going to say they're reducing, but we're not seeing those same kind of increases. So when I say we're leveling, that's what I mean. We're not really seeing drops in prices, we're just not seeing the jumps that we were seeing before. So 4% inflation is where we were sitting when I pulled this at the end of May. The Fed's target, as you know, we've talked about, is 2%. They did pause on the rate hikes, so I'm kind of giving that, what they've done over the past 12 months, some time to settle and see what the actual impact was to the economy. So don't really know what their plan is for the next few months or the next few meetings, but we watch that all the time. So still having a little bit of issues with supply chain issues, although that has improved. Labor costs, of course, labor market, workforce in general, and I don't think that's just the city. That's really nationwide, I think. And I know Texas is getting pretty hard, businesses just can't, they can't fill the positions that they have open. You know, fuel prices heavily impacted our budget that we're in currently. And again, June 22nd, June of '22 was the largest increase in inflation in 40 years. So big, big jumps there related to multiple things that were going on in the two years prior to that. So currently inflation is trending down, but we're still seeing some lasting impact, specifically labor, housing, those kinds of things as we talk about all the time. Just a few facts, in the past 12 months, housing CPI is up 8% and this is over the last 12 months. So not as big of a jump as it was that first year that the housing market went crazy, but still up there pretty good. New car prices are at 4.7% over 12 months, but declining. So we're seeing better pricing coming in on vehicles and things like that. But overall, even for the general consumer, those prices are coming down. Food's down 11% compared to a year ago and energy costs are down 20%. I think we all see that at the pump. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, those things are, those two factors right there contributed to the biggest decline that we're seeing in inflation. So labor costs contributing to higher prices. We have to pay people more, so things cost more. So compensation costs overall, and this is a US number, is up 4.8% over 12 months with 5% of it being in salaries. We do anticipate an increase in benefit costs. Everyone nationwide is. I don't know what you're reading about healthcare coverage, but it's going to be pretty significant. You know, then in January of '23, Social Security increased their benefits 8.7%. So, and then services, of course, is still up, but that's again partially driven by labor costs. So anyway, so that's just a quick look at where we are inflation-wise. I mean, it's definitely a better story than we were having this time last year, which is why we talked about some leveling within the budget because we don't see those same increases that we were seeing last year, so. Okay. So again, these, this is preliminary. So, and I'll probably say it 100 times, I don't know enough about property tax yet to be able to say. And I'm going to give you more information about that as we go through where we are, what we're seeing and kind of what the trend has been over the past several years. So preliminary revenues right at 37 million. Again, that's about 6% over last year. Sales tax, and you can see, you know, we talk about percentages and how things are budgeted versus how they line up with actuals. So sales tax, 28% of the budget compared to we had 30% last year. We are being very conservative on sales tax and we'll talk a little bit about that more later. Services primarily include solid waste, EMS, and a few other small pieces in there. Recreation does include all of the parks divisions. That does include golf. And so remember that KSP and golf both are fee-based. And so there's also revenues attached to those. So as we look at expenses for those departments, specifically when going to the proposed budget, you know, there's revenues that offset those expenses. It's not just the general fund supporting those directly. Transfers, of course, are included in that. And then intergovernmental, which our primary one there is EMS contract, which is coming up in the next year. And then the school resource officer reimbursement that we receive from KISD for what we provide for them. And again, chief's going to talk to you a little bit about that later.
Is your services percentage up or down from last year?
It's about the same. So when we go into, and I should have put the secondary chart on here, but almost everything lined up within half a percent of what we budgeted last year and what we're running month to month. So I kind of use that as an indicator whenever I see budgets come in. Are they lining up with what's actually happening? And they are. And sometimes that's when I do monthly reports and show you how things are lining up to budget because that's a pretty good indicator to me as are we budgeting accurately. And I would say the only time that we really had a big swing was when gas went crazy. And so then we saw that kind of get out of alignment with what we budgeted, but to me...
Yeah, because sales tax is 28% where it was 30%.
But property tax is up just a hair. I think it was, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that with me. But property tax is, percentage-wise, is up like a point or two, so.
So it kind of balances.
It balances out, yes, yeah. So sales tax was able to help us out a little bit more in the last two years, specifically in budget for '23 because we were having a really strong couple of years, which we still are, dollar for dollar, we are. It's just we're not seeing the, the big jumps we were. So I won't go through all of this in case, you know, unless someone has some specific questions on property tax process. But, you know, for, for maybe even people who aren't in the room, just to understand truth and taxation to, on a, on a high level, because there's a lot of details that have to go in that. But it's important to know that the Kerr County Tax Assessor Collector does calculate our no new revenue rate, our voter approval rate and those kinds of things. But again, not until we get a certified role. So Trina and I have worked through it just preliminarily a couple of times, just based on what we know and where we think we might land. But that's a big guess depending on what's going to happen in the next, you know, few, the next two to four weeks, I would say, we'll be feeling a lot better about the numbers that we're getting from Kirkad. So this just kind of talks you through the same thing we talked about last year with no new revenue rate and what that means. And then voter approval rate. And remember that we are restricted to 3.5% over the no new revenue rate. So as your tax rate goes down, which it's going to as valuations go up, that's just the natural order of things, then your 3.5% is off of your no new revenue rate always. So then the next slide here is just talking through the process. And again, we won't go through over all the, over all this again because I know, you know, most of us have been over this several times. But just kind of talks about what happens with Kirkad, who's responsible for what. The city has absolutely zero input on valuations. And then again, we're limited on what we can do with, with tax rate compared to even what we were, you know, five years ago. So, so anyway, that just gives you a little bit more information on that. If, again, if anybody wants to talk about specifics about tax rates and those things, I'm happy to do that, but it's a much longer conversation probably than we have time for today, but I wanted to include that. Okay, so we'll talk about property tax revenue first since that is by just a little bit our leading revenue for the general fund. So current assumption is 11.7 million in property tax. That's current year taxes only, so not bringing in past due taxes or anything like that. It's a $504,000 increase over last year in property tax revenues. Keep in mind, though, that 200,000 of that is from new values. So you're looking at only like 300,000 at this point today that would be spread over all taxpayers. Last year, the same time, we were talking about 667,000, more than 22. So definitely lower than we were last year on overall revenue. This is assuming that we're, you know, keeping the property tax rate the same or lower. That would be my assumption, you know, just based on what I'm seeing right now. And without a number, it's going to be really hard to give you an exact revenue. But when we get a little closer, I'll be able to give you more. Currently, we have 2.9 billion in value that is certified and 455 million still under review. So you can see that if a third of that 455 million in value, if it was reduced by a third, that's 1.4 million to the general fund. So, you know, you can see why until they get closer, it's really hard to land on something. So all of these are assumptions at this point, just kind of telling you what I've worked on. Typically, we see about, from our preliminary role, just looking back at the last 10 years or so, we see 3% to 5% drop in value from the initial role that we get in April to the certified role that we get in July after the ARB works through all of their processes and things and brings values down. So that's a pretty big number when you're trying to make an estimation on what revenue is. So we kind of just do a trend line and see, you know, what's the increase been historically on a percentage basis and then try to apply that to the tax rate we're using now to get somewhere on revenues. So a little bit early on that, but working through that. This is actually for fiscal year '23, but just kind of as a reminder to what the distribution looks like on property tax and where, where money goes. So obviously, our tax rate went up last year pretty significantly because of the public safety bond, which we'll talk about a little bit more detail later. But about seven, seven cents, seven and a little bit cents, then it went up. So, but you can see the split here of who gets what, and this was 2023. So again, everyone's kind of in the same boat we are, so no one knows rates yet. I don't expect the distribution to be a whole lot different, though. Property tax market values, and again, this as, I think I pulled these on the 15th of June and double-checked them. And you can see market values over the course of the last four years or three years with this year still being preliminary. And then you can see that portion, all the blues are certified and then the dark blue on the top there is still under review, so. Okay, a little bit more on property tax here. This is historical revenue and rate. So you can see over the years, for a long time, the rate was the same. And then you can see a slight drop. And then in 2019, when the new Senate bill was put into place that changed property tax laws, you can see that the M and O rate started to decline. Debt rate has been the same for many, many years until we just issued these bonds. And so you can see the '23 rate there and obviously there's no rate for '24 yet because I'm not even going to put that out there yet at this point. So anyway, this is just, and these are taxable valuations, so you have your market value, then a whole lot of stuff happens, and then you have your net taxable. So there's a lot of things that happen before you can get to what is the value that we actually tax residents on. So it's a lot smaller than the market value.
Do you think you'll be able to give council an estimated on that number? You going to wait until the certified comes out?
I have to because one little thing could happen and everything I told you was wrong. So it only, it only has to change by, you know, a million dollars on the valuation and it makes a pretty significant change to, you know, this and that. But as I know more and we get closer to where I'm looking at values and I feel like there's very little under ARB review, then I don't mind working through it with Bob and saying, you know, where do you think we are? But it's kind of a moot point to talk through that whole 24-page tax calculation worksheet until we're closer because at this point, it's not going to really mean anything. So my, my estimation, estimation is that it will be, our, our tax rate on the M and O side will be lower than it was this year. I mean, it, it has to with, with increase in values. So that would, that would be my very educated guess. I really think it will be. The next slide here is looking at historical new value. And so this is really helpful to us because new value is not part of the no new revenue rate. It's standalone for the first year. So because remember, no new revenue rate is looking at apples to apples. So this exact property to this exact property, year over year, what would make no additional revenue? That's what that rate is. And so new value is not calculated in that. So any new value we have is just additional tax money to the role that is completely new property. So now remember, a new value, sometimes there's some partial. So say we had a big, we use HEB, for example. They weren't fully taxed their first year because they were still in the middle of building. And so what they had completed was, so it's as of January 1. So there's a lot of, all the residential annexations that we did are part of this new value. There's a little bit of commercial, but really new residential rooftops is really what's, what's driving that and helping it. And there's 210 properties that were added to the role this year. Questions or comments or feedback on property tax? Thoughts, things you guys are hearing or want to throw out there for us? Okay. So our next favorite topic, sales tax. So again, estimated to be 28% of the 24 budget compared to 30% that we have right now in '23. So our current assumption is 10.6 million in sales tax dollars. That's 2% or about $200,000 more than we project '23 to end. But again, really until we get October sales tax, we won't be able to truly estimate. And for me, we kind of have a competition in our department starting in about August to see how that's going to fall. But October is the last full month and then November, a piece of that month gets rolled back. So there's still a lot of work to do on sales tax to get you an exact number. So whether we go up or down a percent in our assumption, it's about $100,000 per percent. So if we were to say it's a 3%, sales tax comes back way better in the next few months and we feel like we can go to a 3% increase, well, then that's $100,000. But if we have to go down because it keeps falling or reducing, well, then that's $100,000 the other way, just to give you an idea of if we have to make adjustments to that, what that impact would be. Of course, risks are always out there with sales tax. Volatile, I mean, we've seen it in the past couple of years. And there's just too many factors to, to be able to predict. I think that people are just holding back on their spending right now. But also, again, you're not going to see those same kind of increases that we saw year over year. So we're not in a doom and gloom situation from a dollar standpoint. It's just we're used to seeing those last few years, we got comfortable with that 15% to 16% increase, we're just not seeing it. So, but I will say that in looking at trends, and I had a line drawn on here, but it was too confusing, so. Basically, if you looked at the increase, and actually I think I'm getting ahead of myself, it's on the next page, I'm going to wait one more page. So we talk about sales tax following a pattern and you can definitely see that it follows a pattern. So it makes it a little bit easier for us to project in looking at habits and spending habits and what happens. You know, you have a few anomalies when we say, well, someone paid early or especially if two large taxpayers pay early, which happens, or someone pays late, you'll see a big huge spike and then a drop. And so we just watch that really closely. We look down to, I would say, any taxpayer that pays us more than about $3,000 every month, and it's a lot, we look at every single taxpayer to see what are they doing? What's, what were they doing over the past few years? What does that look like to today? Do we have any weird stuff that we have a big payment from that's a one-off thing that we never see again and remove or add things to our projections based on what we see? So that's kind of what, you know, this is just a little piece of, of that. And then this is where I was going to kind of point out, I mean, if you look at the sales tax revenue, the percent change on this top-left graph here, if you look back to 2019, so what I'm going to call our last known normal, where we were at, you know, just slightly under 6% increase, that's where we are now. So if you look at percent change, we're more leveling to what I'm going to call a normal level. But then if you look at the little chart on the right, you can see the dollar difference really from 2019 to now. So I mean, we're 41% up over 2019. So it's hard to say we're having horrible sales tax year because we're not when you consider the dollars compared to what, what we had as a normal year. So that's why I kind of included that little chart on the right, just to say, this is what it was. This was the increase year over year. Obviously, '21 and '22 were high, but if you think about what was happening, we had stimulus money coming in, we had payroll protection stuff, extra $600 a week unemployment, extra child tax credit, and those things have gone away. And so we had this big unusual influx of money into the economy, which then got spent, which was great for us at the time, trying to recoup from some of the other things that happened during COVID. But, so I'm not discouraged by sales tax. I wish it was higher, obviously, we all do, to give some relief to some other things. But when you look at it dollar for dollar, our sales tax is really pretty healthy. Questions or anything on sales tax or assumptions based on what I've said? Do you feel like that's reasonable at this time? I know it's conservative. Last year, we were talking about 6% over estimate. This year, I'm talking about 2%.
There was a, I guess, a law that passed where people who shop online, that sales tax goes directly to the city or the, you know, that...
Right.
The person who purchased the items. Have you seen that number climb?
So we follow that really closely, actually, in every state. I think we talked about this a little bit in a workshop. Every, every state has their own law as far as whether sales tax is what we call destination-based or source-based. So Texas is one of only 12 in the United States. It's actually has a, it's not, we don't have destination-based, we have origin-based. So if anything that's produced here and shipped out of here, we keep the sales tax for. Now, if someone lives in, I'm just making up Idaho, I don't know if that's a good example or not, but they have destination-based sales tax and they buy something and get it shipped to them, then the tax goes with the product. And so we don't have that right now in Texas and it keeps coming back to the legislation every year. In fact, it came back up again this year because we have people that are wanting to change that. But oddly enough, those 12 states that are like us, we make up the largest dollars of sales tax. So, you know, there's a lot of 380 agreements out there that, you know, people are saying, well, they're giving incentives for these companies to come there so that they have sales tax. And while that's true, you look at cities across the United States and that happens. So that's a big topic. And if that were to change, we would be having a completely different conversation because right now we get to keep all of our shipping sales tax, which we need. So that's, that's a big topic among the legislators and it comes up every year.
What is that number?
For us? It'd be a lot. I'm going to estimate somewhere around 100,000 a month or more.
Oh, wow. Okay.
That's a guess, based, just based on what I know as far as who we keep sales tax from that also has a lot of online business.
Okay.
It'd be big, so we, we don't want that.
Yeah.
But we're watching that closely and it did come out this year, but there was some changes about keeping existing 380 agreements and not taking those away and that that, so there's a lot of argument about that from different, different legislators about how they feel about that.
Wow, 100,000.
It's a guess, but yeah, it'd be a lot. It'd be big. We, we, yeah. Okay, let's jump into expenses a little bit. Right now, preliminarily, 37.7 million in expenses. Again, that's about 6% higher than last year. And you will see as we go through this, most of that is personnel because everybody's pretty much stayed within their operating budget compared to what they were in '23. So I gave you a '23 chart here. This is exactly the same chart that we saw in the '23 budget, proposed budget presentation. And you can look at everything lining up. And again, that's something that I look at to see, do we have big shifts and big swings in the way we're spending money? And we really don't. So I did miss a call-out right there on the orange on the left. That should be other. I just missed, I missed that. So that one should be other. But, you know, you can look at everything, really maintenance is up a little bit, but not enough to really swing things. And everything else is within half a point of what it was last year. So even going back to '22, it was the same kind of percentage break. So we like to see that. That just says we're consistently budgeting the same way. And when our monthly reports show that, that means that we're lining up with our expenditures the same way, too, so.
And on this orange one, what's the percentage for other?
It's going to be about, be about 2%. Be close to that. I'll get you that, I'll pull it up in a minute and check it, but it was, it's small. And that's going to be things like contingencies in there. So, you know, that's a, we might spend it, we might not kind of thing. We, you know, have that contingency in there. So that's, otherwise, it would be probably 1% if we didn't have that in there. That's probably the biggest expense that's in there. Looking at personnel, so same as last year, majority of our personnel expenses in public safety, just, you know, sheer numbers. On the graph, you can actually see dollars in personnel that's assigned to public safety and then general government right there as well as the FTE count. So just to give you an idea of how many employees are in each. The other thing that we talked about last year that we really don't consider is the support departments for public safety. So there's a lot, you know, IT does a lot, finance, a lot. And then of course, admin, parks has the janitorial stuff that goes along with them and several other support pieces. So there's a lot of people and positions that support that. So without doing that calculation, it's really hard to say what percent is actually public safety, but true departmental public safety, 59% of our personnel budget.
Does this account for a number of new? It does not.
So when we get, we'll get into personnel in a minute, but we really, we have what we're going to call some pinch points in personnel, like some places we really need to talk about. Right now, we only have one additional FTE. So you know, we've added some over the past few years. So fire and police have both gone up three to four employees over the past three years. So we've been working on that to get them to a more adequate staffing level. Does that say that's where we need to be overall? No. I mean, within the next few years, I completely expect to see that we're going to be adding positions specifically over there. But we have some other, especially customer-facing areas that, you know, need to be addressed. But again, we're waiting on a little bit of that until we see kind of what's property tax going to come back? What are some of these big revenues? How sales tax going to pan out to see really what's doable? Because as I said, we've kept everybody operational to pretty flat. So we don't have a lot of give when it comes to expenses. You know, if we get anything additional, it's going to be because we found revenue, not expenses. Yeah. So more to come on that. And I think I'll talk through that a little bit here in a moment as far as what that is. This is overall expense distribution. So just looking at where we took all department expenses and divided them out on a percent basis to be able to say, public safety right now has 51% of expenses and the remaining general government has 49%. This is almost identical to what it was last year. It was 50.6% last year on public safety. So you know, again, we're seeing the same kind of, same kind of percentages. So consistency is definitely, definitely on our side. Okay, this is just a little bit more on what we were just talking about. So on the personnel side, right now, personnel is up 7% over 2023. In 23, we had 17% over 2022. But remember, we had a mid-year COLA. We had the comp study things that we had some strategic market adjustments to positions that affected last year. So definitely down percentage-wise from last year. And personnel includes more than just salaries and wages. So I listed that out there to let you know it's salaries, it's overtime, cert pay. Health insurance is one of the big ones, retirement and any training costs. That's all considered personnel. So when we talk about overall expenses, if we have an increase in training, that's going to drive our increase in personnel as well. So and if anytime you need a more specific breakout, I mean, it will come out in the proposed budget book, you know, as a line item. But as a group, when I give them to you, even in monthly reports, it's, those things are all considered personnel. So at the beginning of the year, we might be a little bit different in personnel because we really haven't kicked off training yet. And then when you start seeing spring and training starts kicked off, you kind of see the gap start to close on personnel. So that's one of the, one of the reasons. This doesn't assume a step plan increase for eligible public safety employees as we do each year. It assumes a leveling of public safety step plan and I'm going to have Chief McCall talk to you a little bit about that in just a little bit. It's something we've been working through for the last several months. As typical, assumes an average 3% merit increase for all general government. And it also includes a 3% COLA. And I know, you know, we've talked a little bit about our compensation study and what's happened. So that 3% will resolve any strategic market adjustments that need to be made. Citywide, there weren't near as many positions this year affected as there were last year because it had been a while since we'd really looked at that. And with the labor market coming out of 21 and 22, we just, we couldn't stay caught up with what anybody was doing with labor because everyone kept doing increases. So, so that does assume that COLA at this point. Staffing needs consideration, as we just talked about, you know, we do have some needs on the public safety side, of course, we always do. And with growth happening, you know, I feel like that's going to be a continued need. We have some needs in parks just from a customer-facing position, but also in maintenance. And as we talked about, you know, yesterday in EIC, really addressing some maintenance needs and those kind of things. You know, eventually, that's something we're going to have to address and say, we're going to have to staff that adequately to be able to do that, even though that's not a position that, you know, we think of as, you know, glamorous. That's a very important part of what we do to maintain our facilities and our grounds and all those kind of things. So definitely something that we're going to be bringing back to the table for potential FTEs. It assumes a health insurance increase. Right now, experts are saying it's going to be big. I don't know exactly what that's going to be yet. You will have a workshop on that in July. Kim has gone out for bid and is also in negotiation process with multiple insurance companies to see if she can work some magic with the healthcare because that, that'll be a big driver.
Do I have my wand?
Yep, she has her wand in her.
Do what you did last year.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for. That's what we're hoping for.
She needs a bigger wand.
A hammer. So she's still in negotiations on that and really that's another big pressure point. So depending on what that comes back can have an impact on all the other things I'm telling you right now. But you will have a workshop on that in July as the Employee Benefits Trust team and then coming back as you, as a council team to approve that, all of that.
So then is that increase included in the number that you gave?
It is.
Okay, so then where are you seeing approximately?
I have a 15% increase in there right now. I'm hoping that's enough. I'm a little frightened that it isn't, but I'm hoping that's enough. So definitely a lot more to come on that. And if Kim gets information sooner, she'll be bringing that back to us sooner. But right now, we just don't know. So. Yep, yep. And that is built in. I just hope I built in enough.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Last year, we started out building in eight and then it ended up coming back at five. And so we were able to get a little bit out of it. So you can cross your fingers and hope it comes back at 10. That would make me super happy, but you know, just not there yet. We're hoping, yes. Okay, so looking at expenses, and I think this will answer your question, Mayor, that we were discussing earlier. So supplies down 2% compared to 23. Primarily just because we're not seeing those huge increases that we were seeing before. Last year in 23, supplies were 13% over 2022, if that gives you an idea of where we were. And then just some listing of their, what supplies include. So supplies, small tools and equipment, chemicals, uniforms, anything that's really just a supply straight-up expense. Maintenance up 3%. So we are still seeing, you know, some rise there. But again, there's big labor costs where that's concerned. But FY23 was budgeted at 12% over 22. So much different than we've seen in the past. And that includes really all kinds of maintenance. And it does also include technology, software maintenance agreements. Kind of seems strange, but that's, you know, we pay those agreements to different software companies that we contract with for use within the city and that's in there, too. Services up 3%, again, driven primarily by labor and supplies. Last year, it was 8% over 22. That's a typo. Somebody didn't edit me good. So last year, bigger percent increase there. And then other, and that's going to include community support, dues and subscriptions. Also, remember that contingencies in there, up 2% over 23. And then transfers are up and primarily that's going to be because of the increased asset replacement transfer that we continue to talk about. It's not a huge increase. I'm hoping that maybe we can get a little bit more out of it. But again, I've got to wait and see on some of these other factors. Right now, we have that plug at 650,000. Last year, it was 600,000. Really probably need to be closer to 750, but we're not there right now. So just working through that process and seeing, you know, how those big, big-ticket items are going to come back before we can get a final on that. Right now, development services transfer is slightly less than it was in 23. But we have some big projects kicking off and things like that. So we're expecting revenues to be better over there. As I mean, we're already seeing that on development services from some of the stuff that's happening. So TMRS, this is basically our retirement pension fund. Contribution rate increased from 10.5% to 10.84. That's really not huge as far as a big factor because TMRS is on a calendar year and we're on a fiscal year. So we have the first three months of our year at the lower rate and the other nine months at the higher rate. And so we use a blended rate to determine that. That really wasn't surprising considering they're always working on actuarial stuff from a year behind. So when you look at what investments we're doing, you know, a year and a half ago, that's what we're working on. So last year, we had a reduction in that because we had a great investment year the year before. So I would suspect next year will be less because we're having a really great investment time right now. So it really depends on how much money their pool of cash makes so that they can contribute or make sure that our funding level is where it needs to be. So all that goes back into our funding level. That change will be effective on 1-1. So again, we use a blended rate of a nine and three. We are 92.1% funded, which is really good. We have assets of 95 million. I looked back to about five years ago and we were 86% funded. So I mean, that makes me feel good that we're, last year, we were a little over 90. So that's really good, meaning if everyone retired, we would have enough money to almost fund all of that at one time if we had to. So that's really good. We currently have 324 active TMRS members and 280 retirees or beneficiaries of some sort. So just a fun fact number.
Retirees, we don't give them a cost of living, do we? We have not. To my knowledge, we have.
Not. Now, there may be a time when that did happen, but I'd have to.
Back in, I think, part of 2010, I believe.
Okay. So I'm going to turn it over to David for a moment and let him talk to you about streets. Yes, we moved a podium just for you.
And chief.
Oh, yeah, and chief, too.
Okay. All right. So streets, maintenance, funding. So as you can see here in 24, we're going to propose a 2.15, which is going to stay consistent with what we had in FY23, the current year. We were fortunate to get ahead in years three and four. So I think keeping it steady will keep us in line with the plan, with the, with the master plan. So it won't, it won't have any major impact on, on operations or, or funding. As mentioned here in this bullet point, we're on track with the current outlined funding in the pavement management plan. Keep in mind, 2019, we did have those bond funds for 13 streets for reconstruction. That was all completed. Helped us get, get ahead of the curve a little bit. So that was helpful in 2019. So as we monitor the budgets, we try and hit that amount we want to, want to hit for maintenance. But any leftover funding is transferred into a CIP project. So. And we're currently updating the master plan. So hopefully, we'll have a good following 10 years to see what the funding is going to look like for requirements. Just going to assess what we've done. Sort of a calibration to get us a new path. So, next slide. So this is a snapshot of what we have currently for slurry seal, crack seal and milling overlay. Milling overlay is in-house. That's what our staff does. And crack seal and slurry seal is contracted out. Milling overlay, we've already done fourth, fifth, working on Ross, Miller. So we're making some good progress. Slurry seal and crack seal, that's always a challenge because sometimes it'll, it'll bleed into the next fiscal year. Because our paving season is different than our fiscal year. We'll pave March through November. So it, it depends on where it falls on the contractor being available. But that'll hopefully be done in September or October, depending on, on the contractor.
Tell me about your awards, Dave.
Sorry?
Talk about your awards.
The awards. Oh, yeah. So Streets was awarded the Texas Asphalt Paving Association project for municipalities. So it's the second consecutive year. So they're doing outstanding job. Professionals come out and they grade what's been done. So Brandon Kelly, our assistant streets manager, spoke at the last conference. And they were asking, you know, what, what are we doing here in Kerrville? You know, you guys are doing something right to, for the success you guys are having. So yeah, second year in a row, great team. So they're, they're doing a great job.
Questions for David while he's, I know streets is a hot topic.
Hot topic.
We're looking at 2.15 million. That's down from our approximately 2.3 for this year.
It's probably the same as we are for this year.
In terms of.
In terms of.
What we budgeted was approximately 2.3. So we're only expecting to go up to.
So the, the plan in year one began at 1.755 and with increases in increments of $100,000. So that will put us at 2.155 for 24.
For this year that we're in right now, we have 2.155 budgeted.
We were ahead.
Can you help me understand where I'm missing then? If the budget has 2.29?
The budget has 2.15. I'm not sure where you're getting 2.9.
On 140, page 149 of the budget, under streets.
Oh, well, you're looking at the whole street. What do you?
Right. I'm talking about the entire.
No, no, no. We're talking about just the maintenance budget, just that one single line item that's dedicated to maintenance only.
So can you help me?
We're not talking about the whole budget.
So just, just for paving, that, this is, this is speaking only on paving.
Yeah.
Slurry seal, crack seal, contractors, engineering services, software, which we're going to implement this year. It's strictly just for our paving maintenance. Everything else is, is different line items.
Right. Like there's, there's
Drainage.
Drainage in there.
Signs, things like that.
And that made up the difference?
Well, streets overall, streets overall is 4 million.
Right. Yeah, I'm just, I'm not including all of that because it's not included in this plan, this program.
That's right. So I'm looking up real quick for you. I don't have my budget book.
No, we can, we can talk about line, too, get more details.
Yeah, let's, let's circle back to that. And that way I can look at exactly what you're looking at. But from a street maintenance budget, we budgeted 2.155, exactly what we're proposing for this year. And the main reason is, as David said, the, the street maintenance, the plan that came out back in 2019, we actually got ahead of that a little bit during COVID year, during that COVID year. Because we dedicated a little bit more money two years in a row. So we actually got ahead. And now we're getting to the point where we're funding more than they can actually do. And so I think that's why this new assessment will really be helpful because it'll just bring us back to, as David said, just recalibrate. Like where are we? Let's look at what we've done. And we were talking yesterday and the plan did a big plan for reconstruction and also maintenance. And all the reconstruction that was within that plan has been completed and most of the maintenance. So the plan's working because that's what we're following. So. Does that make sense? And we can come back to the budget thing and I'll look at it with you and show you.
Yeah, I can be with you.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure. Any other questions or comments on streets? Probably in the next few months, whenever Public Works gets, you know, meets with their consultant and gets all the information back, they'll be bringing that to you in a workshop just to let you know what the outcome was of the, of the new maintenance plan.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a new, new plan over the next 10 years. So we'll, we'll see what that calls for.
Anything else on Public Works or anything?
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, Chief McCall's up.
All right. From the SRO's perspective, we're currently filling four SRO positions. One sergeant, three school resource officers. Just kind of side note, one of our school resource officers is deployed to the border and we've assigned a patrol officer in to fill in for him while he's away when school is in session. We share those costs with the schools at a five-sixth rate, meaning take that up to 10/12ths, meaning 10 months of the year. They're working basically for the schools. Two months of the year, we're getting their services in the summertime. So we split that. Currently have a, an officer at Tybee High School, one at Peterson Middle School, and two that rotate through the elementary schools. As kind of a side update, we just assisted KISD with their interviews for their, for their Marshall program, school Marshall program. And I believe they've identified some good candidates for those positions there. And they will be filling the other three elementary schools where we currently do not have someone permanently assigned. If you have any questions, we share everything from salary and benefits to vehicles, fuel, communications, the equipment that we assign. We share all of those costs with the schools at that five-sixth rate. And we'll continue that through the year. Any questions on the SRO side?
I'm just glad to see that they're adding a couple of people for, for the elementary. Yes.
Yeah, they've stepped up. They really wanted to target retired law enforcement and I think they've been able to attract that with, with the position that they posted. I think they'll end up with some, the good program there. Good compliment. Four elementary schools.
Now, when they, and I'm just curious, when they're not at the school like now, any possibility they're doing some traffic control?
So right now, what they're doing, they're currently in school resource officer school. They have to certify in that every summer. So they go through that training. We utilize them as well for some of our summer programs, our citizens, children's, citizens academy, as well as our academy that will be having for the little ones here in another week. So, so they help us a lot with our community services efforts in the summertime. And when they're not doing that, they're assigned to patrol and assisting with. And when they're not doing that, they're assigned to patrol and assisting with patrol.
I've just seen a lot more patrol, I've seen a lot more people stopped, and, which is good. And I just wondered if maybe that's what they were doing.
We're starting to turn some of our folks who've been in training over the last year, they're all starting to hit the streets within the last two to three months. We still have three in the academy, one in field training, and a couple of open positions. But you're starting to see that personnel effort ramp up out there, and we're able to start getting back to having time to do the additional traffic enforcement rather than chasing calls all day. Did we want to talk about the STEP program now?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that.
We've been working on the STEP program. This is about a two or three-year process that we've been working on. To give you a little history, previously, a person's hire date was kind of their STEP date in our program. And with 60-plus folks who fell in that STEP program, tracking those dates became almost a full-time job for multiple people in the organization. So we've really been working to try to draw those to a single date. This year, fiscal year '23, we pressed the STEP program into two dates, an October 1 and an April 1. So anybody that fell in between those six-month periods that would do a STEP, we pushed them forward to the October 1 date or the April 1 date. This was in anticipation of what we're proposing to do this year, which is to align everybody onto a single date of October 1 and put us into a yearly rotation for STEP increases, rather than currently, it's a two-year rotation, you're waiting to get your STEP. So what we've done is taken anybody for October, we'll get their normal 4% that would have fallen in that group on October 1. Anybody in the April group that would have received 4%, we're bumping them to April 1, and they're going to get a 3% raise. They'll see the benefit of that throughout that year, so that balances them, kind of makes them square. Anybody who would have been October 1 of next year, we're bringing them in at a 2% increase on October 1. And anyone who would have been the April 1 increase, we're bringing them up to a 1% on October 1. That aligns everybody, keeps everybody, all things the same, and then it gives us the ability to work from that point in our next direction.
Definitely makes it easier from a budgeting standpoint and also from a simply management standpoint from HR. I mean, it's just a, it's a super fun for them to keep up with who, what, when, and where. And every two years...
Yeah, that puts everybody on the same 10-1 timeframe for merit and for STEP.
And then it's also, you know, especially with retention being the way that it is, they're not having to wait two years to see any kind of an increase. So it levels it a little bit there, too, so I think it's going to be a really good thing. But we got through the process and the chiefs came back with some good plans, and we were able to work in a way that it was fair and equitable to everybody that we shift to that, so.
Thank you for all the work to do to make that happen, that's great.
Yes, the chiefs came up with that plan, and they did a lot of background, a lot of behind-the-scenes work on that.
I'm going to give Chief Mahoney credit on that, he had to explain that to me two or three times.
Me as well.
Okay, we'll talk, Trina, talk a little bit about debt service, not a whole lot that you haven't seen before.
Not a whole lot to it, so fiscal year '24 debt service, amount going out is 4.7 million, and those bills that need to be paid. Of that, 1,090 is EIC sales tax that takes care of that portion. 2.5 of that is for the public safety facility, and we all know that's our new debt service. And then the remaining portion that's paid by property tax is 1.1 million. We look like we may have a little bit of drop, capacity coming up 2030, maybe? It's going down, trending down, but for the most part, we're a little bit maxed out on our capacity for the moment. We may have a little bit room coming up here and there, but we always work with our financial advisors and see if we can do anything, if there's any room. But for the most part, debt service is locked in, 4.7.
And good rates right now, so I don't really see any potential refundings coming up in the next couple of years until we kind of see what the economy is. And, you know, we're lucky that most of our debt is down in the 2%. Really, really, really lucky there. So I feel like we're in a good spot, so I'll comment on that in a moment when we talk about...
This slide here is fiscal year '23 asset replacement, or estimated in where we think we will land. So this year, we transferred in 600,000 from general fund. And then we have this year also disposed a lot of unused items or things that are sitting around. We've tried to sell and recoup some of that. So we've actually done pretty good asset disposal proceeds, estimated to come in at 100,000, and then interest income is doing well. So with that, we were able to purchase our new big street paver this year. That picture to the right is an old, the old one, we replaced. And then we have...
She knew your own, 29, eight or 29?
She flipped.
Oh.
She knew what she was saying.
I'm sorry, can we finish that one out?
Where are you at?
We're on page 29 on the picture. I totally skipped that one. We have the IT switch lease. Charby, do you want to discuss anything on that, what that exactly is? Golf equipment leases, so those all came into, under the general fund this year, and they lease a lot of their equipment, their golf carts. We have mower, mowing equipment on there. A few irrigation controller, that's a new thing. For the most part, we're looking for estimated ending cash balance of 1.3 million in the asset replacement fund. And mostly because of the supply chain issues we have, we haven't been able to get everything in. I think we have at least four vehicles on order right now that we're supposed to come in in '23, haven't. So that's accounted for. But rolling into '24, we will have that starting balance. I'm going to backtrack to '28, page 28. And on the general asset replacement side, for those who don't know, so we treat this somewhat as a savings account so that we can push money over and save up for the larger purchases we need to get through. We have ambulances that come up, the fire trucks, the pavers, the big equipment that costs money. Here, the chart to the left are your annual transfers. So you can see '19, '20, and '21, we did not budget to transfer any money in. I really don't remember at the time, but why we didn't. But with COVID year, we had a large surplus because we had the tranche of CRF funding that came in, so it helped cover a lot of general fund costs. So then we had a lot of excess funds that we were able to transfer out, so that's a good thing. '21, we didn't budget because we still were living in COVID and didn't know what was going to happen. But moving into '22, we started having all these discussions about long-term asset replacement needs and saying we need to start building this pot. So the 440,000, what we budgeted, we, in the end, were able to move out 880,000, just working more towards this long-term asset replacement program where we need to build up, ramp up. And as Julie says, 600,000 for '23, we moved in, and then 650,000 is what we're planning to do for '24, and still working on all that long-term. Guillermo and his team have been helping us through all the details, and David and Public Works using software program just to capture everything, make sure we have everything on the list, and make sure it's all accounted for when the next years roll in and planning ahead, forecasting out what kind of dollars we're going to need. All right, so let's skip to slide 30, sorry. Are you there? Okay, so this is your fiscal year '24 proposed budget number, starting at that 1.3 million cash balance. We are transferring in 650,000. We have interest revenue and asset disposal proceeds that will help feed that. Right now, we have on the books existing leases of 309,000 that we're paying out. That's vehicles on the streets. Those are on a reoccurring schedule, so at some point, they're going to come up for replacement also. And then we have the proposed leases under that, follow under that. So PD has two Tlahos on order that haven't come in yet. So by the time we get in there, be part of the '24 cost. Fire department, same thing, battalion vehicles. And then we have some stuff in order for parks maintenance, sports complex, and then streets. If you see there at the bottom, the other charges, delivery, we, so when we order, get these leased vehicles, now with our GAZB-87 criteria, we are to capture the value of the asset, the right to use of the asset. So we're trying to keep these things separated for the cost of the vehicle versus how much it really costs us to get the vehicle here. So there's delivery toll charges and stuff we kind of reel in. And then we have purchases there to the right. So we are looking, the larger purchases there, we have a street dump truck that's a 1998 we're looking to replace, and then a Pelican street sweeper. So with these two big purchases in Streets, we think we're going to have majority of our larger assets done for them for a while. So throw some big things out of the way. And then just some information, information technology equipment that we really need, these backup servers to maintain everything we have, footage, video, just a lot of things that go into what we do every day that has to be held on to. Those are kind of costly, so...
I have a question about your TASER warranty plan. That's a one-time fee, I'm assuming?
It is a three-year plan.
Okay, so it's that amount of money for a three-year service plan?
But we're actually getting, how many new TASERS out of that every year?
We don't get new TASERS.
Okay.
We're paying for the maintenance of the TASERS, they no longer sell you a TASER.
Okay, okay.
It's a maintenance program that keeps all your software up to date. It stores all of your digital evidence that comes off of the TASER, and it's paid for the TASERS themselves that we've had in place.
Okay, so do the TASERS remain the property of the company and they're just kind of leasing it to us, is that what?
Well, they're our property, but they will replace them if they're damaged, they will... We see this set up in a lot of technology-based purchases these days. It's very difficult to actually purchase technology on it outright, I guess.
Usually you'll have a $1 buyout clause at the end of the lease, so you choose to keep the replacement, you buy it off for dollars. You know, the reason you want to go to this lease-based model is that at the end of five years, you get the new equipment, and that's usually when those equipment fades out anyways or no longer under maintenance.
Okay.
We're in the same situation with the body cams that we just went into, we just don't have an expense with that yet. We're still under the initial buy, so we're not seeing that. Now, we will see that in next year, we'll start seeing that piece kick in, so...
I think we're good on that for five years.
Until '25?
Are we paying additional software licensing fees, or is that included in these fees?
For a TASER? Yeah, that's included in these fees.
Okay.
Charby, anything on those IT items that might be important? Very straightforward?
On the IT items, Trina pretty much captured it all. As we continue to grow our, the data that we collect, we need more backup storage just to ensure that we have, we keep the data based on retention. So that's the reason for that backup server line item. So for the virtual hosts, these are, we're continuing our plan with our virtualization of all of our servers. So instead of having 10 servers, we'll minimize that to a single server and house all those virtual servers on that single server. So that's what those slide items are for.
Is the backup then going to be a virtual or in-house?
It's going to be a combination, because one of the things we look at is kind of a hybrid, on-prem and in the cloud, because you don't want to keep all your ducks in one single basket. So you'll have probably an off-site backup, and what we've been seeing trending is a cloud-based backup.
So both?
Yes, yes, it'll be a hybrid.
Everything will be backed up both in the cloud? And this new backup server is going to do that, or do we have one, do you need another one?
On-prem, right now, we do on-prem backup services, but we want to start pushing that to the cloud. So in the case something happens to Kerrville, you'll have that backup to restore from, that's in the cloud.
Okay, so then this additional backup server, that's a virtual one?
It'll be a backup solution, so it'll be on-prem, that, what you see there is going to be the on-prem side.
Okay, all right, thank you.
How soon will you need that?
We have it in place, and so we have the on-prem backup now, yes. But we want to definitely enhance that, our backup solution, coming next fiscal year.
We want to back up the backup. Any questions? Okay, I was going to add...
I've got one thing, I'm sorry. So we're going to spend $280,000 on a street sweeper. How often do we use the one we have right now?
All the time.
We have...
We actually two, we have two.
The Elgin, Elgin Pelican is used for when we're actually paving, where they pick up the air, so they've got a room and they dump it into a bucket. We also have a back-end type sweeper, too, that pulls up the wall and finds the pieces. So depending on what we need, that's what we do.
And just to add to that, the one that we're replacing, the maintenance cost on that, has gone problematic over the last few years. I mean, to the point where we don't have to replace an engine, but the mechanics came out that we're done and we're able to save it. So I mean, we're getting to the point where either purchase now or wait and replace an entire engine on the vehicle.
It is 2004.
So it's definitely past this last year.
It's 2004. And so our garage, and for your benefit, Jeff, can you take like just 30 seconds and explain iWork and kind of what we, how that works? Because it's pretty systematic in the way they capture data as far as when to replace things and whether it's time or hours or maintenance costs or those things.
So we have a software called iWork, and the iWork software has all of our rolling stock in it. And the system is designed to try to use four different categories to calculate when the life cycle of a vehicle is used. Now, we don't just use that piece because there's a lot of information that's missing because we went, we implemented it in 2017, so there's a lot of information on a lot of our older vehicles. So we use additional evaluation of vehicles. So when we use iWork as our starting point, from that starting point, we bring in the vehicle to the garage, and the guys or the mechanics will go through it and give it a once-over and see if this is a vehicle that should still remain in our fleet, or can we extend its life? Or is it a vehicle that's at its end of its life? And so we go through that process, and then eventually what we do is we end up sitting with the departments and say, here's our recommendation for this particular vehicle or pieces of equipment. And then we have a conversation with them, they either agree or say, you know what, can we push this vehicle out a little bit more? And we really need to replace it, because ultimately, they drive the vehicles, right? And they're the ones that actually know the uses and the failures that the vehicles are going through on a day-to-day basis. We see them when they get to the garage, and we document it that way. But iWork is trying to calculate a replacement life schedule that looks at usage, looks at mileage, looks at maintenance costs, and then, there's always one I always forget, but there's the fourth category, I just can't remember what it is right now. H, yes, thank you, H.
Thank you, sir. So when we're looking at the whole list of assets that we have scheduled to be replaced, whether it's leased or purchased outright, are we looking ahead? Or is this stuff that we need because of the year we're in now? And then my next question leading on would be, how far are we looking ahead? Are we going to be in a similar situation next year where we're having to, you know...
No, we try to look about 10 years ahead. So we're not looking at just this year, we're going out 10 years.
For 10 years ahead.
No, not that, not that number.
That's what I'm wondering.
This is what's going to happen this year, this is what we're budgeting to do this year, but keeping in mind what's coming the next 10 years.
Right, so like, I guess, in other words, the sweeper that we were talking about, that's probably towards its lifespan, and we can probably still use it until we get the new one.
Correct.
So what I'm trying to figure out is, with everything else that we have listed here, are we getting ahead of the game? And are we getting those before and advanced because of the supply chain and everything else that we're seeing? So we can have those in time, or...
Well, so keep in mind, you know, we've talked about the especially rolling stocks since, what, the last two or three years, Guillermo? We've been working on a 10-year plan. And we put this 10-year plan in place on all of our vehicles or equipment or, you know, whatever it happens to be that falls in that category. And you say, well, this is what needs to be done. But again, if it goes back to Trina's slide, I think 28, this is what we need, what do we have money for? And so you have to consider that. And so there were a few years there to where it was tight, you know, we weren't really making it a priority. Just, you're, you know, trying to keep revenues low, trying to keep the impact to people as low as you can. But what's happening is things are aging, and so we have to start placing this. And this is why we, you know, we're having these conversations quite regularly about the new budget team as far as assets that we've done. So the next step really is to start talking... So the next step really is to start talking about facilities, but specifically to, to rolling stock in general. Uh, we feel like we have a pretty good handle on what we need to do over the next ten years, whether it be, are we gonna replace this with a lease? Does it make more sense to buy it? You know, and what, what does it look like, what does the equipment look like? And then where the departments are concerned, they've really done what we're gonna call rightsizing, so we're talking about getting rid of some stuff that we weren't using. So they're going through that process also, and I know there's been some operational changes through this budget team process to say, not only are we taking a look at what do we have and what needs to be replaced, but do we need it? You know, is this something we're using or has technology changed and, you know, what does that look like going forward? And so do I think that number is going to decrease year over year? Absolutely not, I think that number needs to be bigger, um, in my opinion. Um, and so there's some other parts, you know, to this that we haven't jumped into yet, but keeping in mind that like the dump truck we're replacing is nineteen ninety-eight. We were going to replace that last year, but at a hundred and forty thousand dollars, do you buy two new patrol cars? Or do you buy a dump truck and then what can get pushed based on its health and its use and those kind of things? So we consider all of those things, um, when we're doing this. You know, it's, it's a huge process to work through the entire list of rolling stock and now throwing assets in there. So I don't know if that answers your question, I don't see the number getting smaller, if that makes sense. Now, to Trina's point, and as we've worked through public works things with David, from a streets side specifically, we've put a lot of emphasis on that in the last two to three years. So the Street Sweeper and the Dump Truck is gonna get us to somewhat of a level where the streets, so now we're more on a replacement plan instead of in an emergency reaction area type plan with the streets' equipment. Um, we're not there yet completely on, uh, police, but we're getting there. So I think we're definitely making progress, would you agree with that?
No, I agree with you. Compared to where we were five to six years ago, we're in a much better position as we're planning more foresight, uh, of replacing our vehicles or a piece of our equipment than just reactionary.
That last part, what you had on as well, I was looking for, so that's why, thank you.
And our plan is to bring you like a five to ten-year plan. Um, we're still, we've worked out through all the lease stuff, when things drop off, when are we gonna replace that with a lease, are we gonna buy it out? How long can we have it before we have to replace it and all those kind of things? We're still working on the purchase side, and that's coming through the asset piece from departments to say, these are all the assets that we have, that's machinery, equipment, vehicles, those kind of things. And then some other pieces to the puzzle, um, you know, you have to consider things like playground equipment, you have to consider, um, facilities, you know, that, that are assets as well. And so we're still working through the purchase and maintenance piece of that, but once we kind of land on that, and I would say it's honestly gonna be after we finish budget, just because we need to reconvene with our team, we'll be able to say, okay, look, over the next five to ten years, this is what we expect, we expect to see X thousands of dollars in leases and we expect to see X in purchases. This is what we think our fund balance looks like, and look out here in year eight, we need to replace an eighty thousand dollar piece of equipment, that's how we're gonna do it. And so that's, that's kind of the process that this team has been working through, and I really think it's functional. I mean, I think that it's, it's pretty, it's really given everybody an opportunity to look at us organization-wide, instead of just saying, okay, tell me what your department needs. But let's take all those factors, put them together, and then let's look at what is our funding, is it adequate, is it not? And if it's not, how do we get there and those kind of things?
Last thing, hopefully this is a quick one, then are you looking at, in future years, increasing the transfers that are going to asset replacement? And possibly having to take that from another category? Or do you think we'll have the revenue to have those transfers?
You know.
If the amount's gonna continue to increase?
Right, it's hard to say, but keep in mind too, that when we talked earlier about just budget process in general and leveling operations and putting the right things where they belong. So making sure that assets are in assets, and so you don't see, you know, operations look like this and all of a sudden we have to buy a dump truck and it looks like that, you know? So you're seeing this, and we want to do the same thing on the asset replacement side, where we take the life of what we have, spread it out over the next five to ten years. Because the reality is, we might need to do this, can we afford to do that is another question, and then how do we level that? What's the best item to push? Uh, what's the best item to fast-forward if we have a lower year, so that we're seeing more of a level? So my hope would be that eventually we get to a stable transfer. Um, the other thing to keep in mind is, asset replacement, at least for the, what we're talking about today, general fund asset replacement, it's part of the general fund. The only reason we separate it out into a separate fund is so that it's super transparent and it's very separate from what we're doing operationally. So it just gives you a little bit different look, um, and you're not looking at, you know, those ebbs and flows operationally if we were to plug it all together. When you look at financial reporting, it's all together. So that all comes back together, same thing with development services. So even though we are transferring out general fund money, that's a general fund. It's just we're replacing the dollars, that's really all it is, and we're replacing priority. And we've said over and over in the past three years, at least that I know of, we've got to start dealing with aging assets, whether that's facilities or vehicles or whatever that happens to be. And I really think that's what we're trying to do. So I think you'll see a lot more over the next few months as how that's kind of playing out through, through the process, so.
Alright, I'm sorry, one more thing for me. How do we dispose of our assets like that? Are we like government auctions dot com?
Correct.
Where we put our stuff on?
Correct, so a couple ways, um, we use GovDeals, that's the site that we use, and anybody can sign up and, and bid on items, um, that the city's getting rid of. And it's anything from, we sold a folding machine that didn't even work for ten dollars, we were happy to get the ten dollars. Um, um, that's just how kind of shinchy we are. So we do, we use GovDeals a lot, uh, but when we sell some of these bigger pieces of equipment, sometimes the trade is more like, um, Shannon will go out and look and see what things are going for on GovDeals. And then we'll compare, is the trade more or less than what we could anticipate getting? So we kind of just do some strategic planning on how are we gonna get the most out of a used piece of equipment? So depends on, I guess, how much a vendor wants to sell us something is how much they give us for trade sometimes, and that trade then counts as revenue. So we put all that money back directly into that fund that's unrestricted for that.
Thank you.
Yep. So kind of just as a quick follow-up, um, to our discussion, um, at retreat, um, so we talked about, you know, utilization of ARPA funds for public safety vehicles. And we haven't really touched on that, and I didn't include it in this because it will be a twenty-three discussion, not a twenty-four budget. But I just want to point out that when we put two point four million dollars to public safety vehicles, if we had to put that in here, where would we be? And so I think that those dollars are giving us an opportunity to play catch-up on some things, um, and we've kind of tasked the chiefs with a plan to where if we go and replace all of these, they have to then go into the replacement plan. And what is their long-term plan to make those last as long as they can, whether they switch their rotation or how they're being used and those kind of things? Um, so that is gonna be coming to you, um, for approval with the budget amendment on the twenty-seventh to talk more about ARPA. But I wanted to point that out because there's a lot more things than we've talked about here, um, specifically with public safety, we have three ambulances. Um, we have fourteen patrol vehicles, give or take. Um, so there's a lot of things that aren't in here because it's not gonna be part of the twenty-four budget, but just if you think about that, that really gave us the leverage we needed to kind of level out this asset replacement by being able to do some things that we haven't been able to do. Because last year, honestly, I think Guillermo and I drew a line at like two thousand six, and we're just like, if it's older than two thousand six, we have to do it, and then everything else is gonna have to wait. And that's not really the right way to be dealing with aging assets. And so this is gonna give us a little bit of a Band-Aid, um, by using those dollars for that. Um, and it also allows us to use some money we would have dedicated to that to be able to go ahead and buy the Street Sweeper, go ahead and buy the Dump Truck. Um, because if we had to put public safety vehicles in there, we would be having a completely different conversation, so just wanted to point that out. And then the other thing that we talked about a little bit, um, was upcoming fire trucks. And so, um, you know, they're a million dollars apiece, and so I think we can't be in denial that that's probably gonna have to come in the form of a tax note, of some sort of short-term, um, financing, whatever that happens to look like. Those are twenty-year assets, um, so for us to say, well, in two years, um, the reality is, we need to be ordering those within the next couple of months. Um, what that looks like at this point, I don't know, I'm gonna be bringing you back more information on that, but, um, it's gonna have to come in some sort of non-direct cash funding, because there is no possible way, uh, with what we have on the books. And then, again, that's a twenty-year lifespan product, so spreading it out and sharing that with people who are gonna be taxpayers in the future makes sense, rather than, you know, all of us, um, funding that today. Uh, but we have several options, um, Chief Maloney and I have been working through, there's some lease options out there, there's some lease purchase options, there's some long-term financing, you know, we s- we always have a tax note. Possibility, um, the short-term, what, max of seven? Max of seven-year payoff, so that's all short-term debt. Um, but we have two fire trucks and, uh, Maloney's not here, what do we say, five fifty in twenty eighteen, we paid for a pumper?
Five fifty, and currently they're sitting at about nine hundred and, uh, six thousand for the identical truck.
Yeah.
Um, they're also looking at a thirty-six to forty-month build-out if you order them today, so, um.
Yes, so that's why we've got to start talking about that really soon.
Chief, are we talking about ladder trucks or the square pump trucks?
The engines.
The engines?
Yes, sir. But the ladder truck right behind that one too, within a few years. Now, you don't, you don't have that much of a space between the ladder truck and the pumpers.
And with those, there's some regulatory, um, things that we can't say, well, we're gonna push that. But with almost a three-year build-out, we're gonna have to start having that conversation really soon. So.
Crazy.
It is, and, well, if this gives you any perspective, we are picking up an ambulance next week that we ordered in October twenty-one. So if that gives you some perspective, we used to not see that, we used to see five to six, seven months, but not anymore. So we, we have to start having that conversation, but we're working through different funding options right now, um, to bring back to you so that we can discuss what we're gonna do. Because it's, we have to do it, it's just a matter of how are we gonna do it, so. Oh, any questions on assets? I know we talked through that a lot, but I knew that was gonna kind of be a big, bigger topic, um, and we have a lot more coming on that for you.
You've got solar eclipse on here, is there anything vitally expensive for that?
Yes, ma'am. So we are, um, working through that, I mean, we meet regularly to talk about, so right now, um, the chiefs are working on emergency management planning, obviously. Um, Ashley and her team are working on event planning, um, and they're kind of working together to try to get people to stay put, so that we don't have mass exodus and, and accidents and all kinds of things happening. So there's a lot of planning things going on right now, um, it's, it's going to be expensive. And I, that's probably gonna come to you in the form of a workshop, once I'm able to give you better information, because we've got to figure out, okay, here's worst-case scenario, here's what we would love to do, here's what we have to do. And then what kind of funding do we want to put there and where's that funding gonna come from? Because, you know, we don't have a million dollars sitting around that we can just say, here, just write a check for that. So we're looking at funding options, um, Parks is working on a lot of donations and sponsorship kind of things in addition to merchandise selling, like we're selling every single thing that we can uh, to generate any kind of revenue we can put back towards that purpose. Um, we're also looking at some emergency management-type, uh, funding. Uh, we've recently reached out to some cities that we've been getting information from that are similar to ours that have dealt with this before, they're not in Texas, obviously, because hasn't happened here like this before. Just to see what their funding mechanisms were, uh, what other grants are out there, um, we've applied for a few. And so we're working through as many outside funding sources as we can first, um, before we bring you something that says we're gonna have to. So, um, and then that will be for council to decide what direction we want to go as far as the options that we bring to you, so.
How soon?
I would say that's coming within the next few months, it, it's gonna have to, because we really need to land on something before the end of our fiscal year, so that we can make a plan going forward for the April. From everything we've been told, the October, uh, event is not going to have a huge impact, because it's obvious, oddly enough, the day of the River Fest, so we already have a pretty big event scheduled for that time. So we're still working through the emergency management, please, but we're not seeing, we're not expecting that, it'll kind of be a trial run for us for April, so April's really.
April's the big one.
It's the big one, and, and there's a lot of planning efforts going on for that right now, we just haven't really landed on what does that dollar look like? So I would say within the next few months, we're gonna be bringing you that, so we're working on that regularly.
Remind me what the deficiency is with our city, uh, garage facility?
Grandma? It's old.
But is it structurally sound?
And functional, I think, is more the issue.
It's more the functionality of the building, not so much the structural, because the building's sound. But we can't get, like, right now, if we were to work on a ladder truck, for example, we have to work on it outside. So if it came in, it's sleeting, raining, or, uh, blistering heat, we're working outside on that vehicle. And a lot of the pumpers now, if it's, if we're not having to work on the engine itself, we can work on it on the inside of the, uh, inside of the, one of the bays. But if, uh, we have to get access to the engine, we have, we have to work on it outside, because the way they lift up, they hit the roof, and so we can't open it. And so we have to work on those vehicles on the outside. So, and then of course, you have some other, like, dump trucks that, uh, we haven't got the lifts to lift them up, to work on them, uh, and to do some maintenance. So a lot of it has to be outsourced, uh, to other agencies, uh, to work on those type of vehicles, those, the heavy, heavy-duty vehicles. Now, we've done some things to try to mitigate that, but in the end.
Okay, so what would, what would it take?
It would take a new facility for us.
A new facility?
A new facility, uh, for the garage to, to be able to do all the work that we need to do.
Does it price take up?
That I don't know.
Okay.
It'd be over a million, I would guess, but I'm, I'm guessing at this point in time.
The other things on this, um, you know, additionally identified things, obviously, some of it's gonna fall into facilities and we are still working on that. It'll be interesting, you know, we get an answer to our RFP, to get a professional to come in and assess the things that we've already made a list of and say, these are our concerns, and we want you to go take a look at them and see, A, do you agree with us? Um, and then B, um, what are the big-ticket items here and what do those look like? And then what's the sense of urgency on each one of those? So, and then some of these other things, I don't know, Mayor, if you want to speak to some of the quality of life stuff, I know we've talked about it quite a bit, um, it's just, it's the obvious stuff that's just, it's, it's not gonna be in an operational budget, um, unless, you know, we start really paying attention to some of that stuff.
Going to have to come from someplace else. And, uh, uh, we, uh, just let EIC know last night what our priorities were from our retreat. And, um, that, uh, pretty much includes the Calo is one, the Gulf Greens is one, um, the Pool is another one. And, uh, our Heritage Museum, which has been lagging behind, uh, and, uh, is going to, and, and of course, we'll find out a little bit more in the future what that's going to take. And, uh, so, uh, it's going to take more than what we're going to be able to just cough up every month to, uh, to do that, so. Uh, so we just, uh, wanted to give, um, EIC a kind of a heads-up as to what we may be coming to them to ask for, so.
Do you think anyone else have anything on other needs or anything that you could think of that might not be on this list?
I've got one for Chief McCall. Sir, with everything that's going on, this eclipse, I've, and I know y'all are working in over fist on everything, but have we reached out to DPS? I mean, they seem to be doing a lot of city policing now, if you look at Austin, or could they come and assist with a hundred thousand extra people in Curville?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we can rely on them, uh, the, the eclipse stretches the, the vast of Texas, so, uh, if there were operations that they currently have going, uh, and the demands that they're gonna have in larger metropolitan areas, I don't know the loop rate very highly. Uh, the state's lagging tremendously in, in preparation for this, every state agency we contact, we're the first to contact them, and they have no answers. They're, they're kind of incidentally.
We're probably on our own here. Can we bring them in from other states?
I'm sorry?
Can we bring them in from other states?
We will, we will work for, we'll work through some of our mutual aid agreements through ACOG to try to get officers from, from the region to come in and assist us, probably day of event. Uh, we'll, we'll monitor as we lead up to the event, what our traffic looks like coming into the city. Uh, every, every indicator we have, uh, you know, it builds slowly and, uh, through the week prior, and then day of is, is really the day that becomes a major issue for, for the, um, municipalities, county governments, state governments. Uh, we're in conversations with Tech dot and, uh, talking with them about some resources they may be able to help us provide. So there's, uh, there's a lot of work going on in the background to, to, for that, for sure.
And Chief, are y'all staff, are looking at for emergency responses?
We'll be full of staff, um, and adding some, it's just, it's gonna be.
Co-op?
Yeah, K O.
Thank you.
We're working on it.
Um, Ashley, with the public park restrooms, what, is that just updating?
That would be an example of, um, Curver Park, for example, that needs to be updated and remodeled, it's apparently old, um, structure, old infrastructure.
Ashley, what about the restrooms at the old pool? I know that we were having some issues with those, were those repaired already, or are we, are we looking at?
That, good questions, that would be included in the aquatics. Okay, numbers, we start looking at that facility. Um, you know, it's the old plumbing is repairing, it's bringing up the ADA accident, all of the issues are.
Okay, alright, thank you. And I would assume that's the same thing with the Shriner Park facilities?
Correct.
They're just old, okay.
Not also.
I would also.
I mentioned, you know, as we talk about asset replacement and that transfer being consistent every year, one of the things that keeps coming up is, uh, maintenance and ongoing maintenance year over year. And so, um, you know, we've set aside excess streets, uh, maintenance that we restrict, um, within CIP. So, if we have additional money that didn't get used, as David was talking about, we're moving that money over to CIP that can either be used for future projects or, let's say, they get ahead of paving one year and they need some money to do something additional that they didn't have money to do, then we can pull from there as well. Um, but one thing we've talked about, especially through this budget team process, is kind of a need for the same kind of restricted funding, whether it be in CIP or whether it be in an additional fund for future maintenance. And so, you know, kind of wanted to get some feedback on, on, from council on that. Just keep in mind, you know, we, we transfer a little bit, um, each year to CIP. I think this year I have a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, moving over there. Uh, we do have a lot of projects going on right now in CIP. So, um, you know, the chances of us using that this year for something current, um, would be small. So, I just kind of wanted to get, um, a gauge on your appetite for potentially creating a restricted fund, either within CIP, where it's just a line item, it's kind of the same kind of thing we do now for streets, or a separate fund that we could start moving over some money, even if it was the portion we have dedicated to CIP this year or a portion of that, or what does that look like? Keep in mind, again, general fund supports any transfers because it is general fund dollars, so that money has to come from somewhere. And so, can we transfer enough to make an impact? Um, you know, as we were talking about doing, you know, Calo roof, for example, we can't transfer enough money every year to be able to pay for a three-million-dollar roof. That's just not going to happen. But if we transferred a hundred thousand dollars, I'm just making that number up, every year into a dedicated maintenance fund, could we replace an HVAC system? Yes. So, I think that it's important for us as we start talking about things that we own are aging and especially as we start talking about implementing a brand-new forty-five-million-dollar public safety facility, we have to put money back for things that have to happen. Like, the building that we're in, when, Kim, when did you move in here?
Twelve fifteen.
Okay, so this HVAC is ten years old. So, when do we start, you know, really starting to say, we've got to consider those kind of things are going to go out. We have to have new paint, we have to have carpet, we have to have, you know, those things have to happen. And so, I just kind of wanted to get a feel for, what are your thoughts on a good way to plan for that down the road?
Well, somehow, like with a new safety building.
That needs, I mean, as soon as that building is, well, probably before it's finished, there needs to be a plan for replacement in, in the future. And however that is the easiest for, for you guys to do, or however it's easiest for us to do with our funds, we need to, we need to get that set up immediately.
Yeah, I mean, as our finance director, what would you recommend?
I recommend an annual transfer, what that looks like. You know, I can propose to you each year, you know, depending on what the, the, our resources look like, of course. Um, but I think, you know, for you to have nice things, um, you have to, A, pay for them and B, you have to upkeep them. Otherwise, we end up in the same situation we're in with having big-ticket items that we're looking for other funding to do. Um, you know, and anytime you talk about a transfer or you talk about additional funds, yes, it's additional money to your budget. And so, we have to consider that when we're talking about things like tax rates. That's, you know, it's the elephant in the room, no one wants to talk about it. But at the end of the day, the general fund is very restricted on what, where dollars come from. And so, we have to keep those things in mind for future planning. I mean, we want to have nice streets, we want to have nice buildings and parks and those things, but that money's got to come from somewhere. And so, in my opinion, you, you have two choices. You can transfer X, you know, whatever that happens to look like each year, into CIP, which we treat it exactly like we do the streets maintenance carryover to where it's restricted, that's all it can be used for. Or you set up a completely separate fund, which is really pretty easy. It's, it's just a, you know, structural thing, um, mechanically from an accounting standpoint, to where we say, we're going to have a maintenance fund or whatever we happen to call that. Um, and then that money goes over there every year and then is, then restricted. It's restricted no matter which we do it. It's just kind of be a matter of, you know, what does that number look like? Um, you know, as I said, I have a hundred and fifty thousand right now in the budget going to CIP. It's really just designed to go to undesignated for the unknowns, um, because we have projects that come up from time to time that we pull money out of that undesignated pot to do. Um, because all the other projects, once they're funded, it's restricted. That's all we can use it for. Um, until the project ends and maybe we have a little carryover and then it goes to undesignated and we start over. Um, so we could do it either way, and really, from an accounting standpoint, it doesn't matter. I think it's more important that we do it, um, and that we make a commitment to doing that because, you know, look at the library situation. Um, you know, they're fortunate that they have, you know, funds. Um, you know, we lovingly joke all the time that we want to go to work for the library because everybody loves the library. And so, you know, they have funding there from, um, friends of library and some other sources, um, people who leave money from their estates and those things. But the general fund doesn't have that. And so, we have to take care of our property or else we're going to be, you know, some of the things that are aging, and I use this building for an example.
As we are with the Calo.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Greens, yes.
Okay, well, I'll come back to you with a proposal on that, you know, like, um. I mean, I think it's a, I, I think it's probably mandatory at this point that we have something, some sort of, uh, account set up, restricted account that is designated for emergencies or those, those things that, that can't really be predicted.
Well, and even if it's not big dollars, it's at least something. You know, because over a couple of years, we could pay for a large repair on something without having to go and, and quickly, um, you know, ask another source or issue some short-term debt or something to pay for a maintenance, um, issue. But again, it doesn't, we could have been set aside money for ten years and we couldn't have paid for the Calo roof. So, I think that's, you know, it's two, two different things. But there's going to be situations to where we just, you know, the gift that keeps on giving sometimes, you know? So, okay, I'll come back to you with more of a proposal on that.
Bring us back, uh, something to look at.
Okay. And then your next slide is just kind of a recap of what you gave us, um, at retreat as far as your top priorities. Um, you know, we've talked a little bit about solar eclipse, I've talked about the quality of life, um, and potential EIC funding there. Um, and these are just some other things that we just, that put on there. Some have budget implications, some do not. But just to make sure, you know, that's on our radar and we are paying attention to what, what was pointed out to us as priorities. So, a quick summary and then I'll see who else has questions. So, as of the fifteenth, um, we're four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars out of balance. Um, that's a little bit better than we were this time last year. We were about five fifty, um, last year. Um, keep in mind, I have some super conservative, um, revenues plugged right now, so, um, more to come.
A little differently.
It's going to have to. That number will be zero, I can promise you. How we get there, I don't know yet, but I can promise you that number will be zero.
That's where you, Christopher.
You know, if you get any letters saying your finance people are crazy, and it's probably true, um, but, but anyway, we will get there. Um, next step, so we'll, you know, keep monitoring, updating, um, tax rolls as they come in, just to see what those changes are. Um, we're monitoring our larger revenues all the time, um, and updating those. Sales tax, obviously, being the big one. Um, EMS revenues, solid waste revenues, um, any franchise-type things that we have out there. Uh, we monitor those monthly or more, uh, if we have the ability to do that. And then we'll continue to update, you know, make any changes to expenses. I don't see, honestly, a lot of give, um, departmentally from operational expenses. They're minus personnel, everyone's essentially flat, um, with twenty-three. So, I definitely want to applaud them for doing the work to get it there because, um, that, that was a big chore, uh, to be able to get that. But I think, you know, we did assume a lot of inflationary things in twenty twenty-three. So, we didn't expect to see big increases on the expense side other than, um, the obvious things that are going to go up every year, insurance, personnel, those things. So, um, so we'll continue to update it, um, and keep you updated as we go through the next month or so. Um, then when we meet back, um, in July for water, I'll bring you back up to speed on general fund to let you know where we are exactly on that, so. With that, um, Kim, Michael, anything you guys have or be the time to, any discussion items that we might not have talked about?
I don't have anything. Any questions from anyone?
Feedback or comments, anything we need to be working on that we didn't mention?
I've got two.
Okay.
Um, we talked a while ago about COA, three percent. Is that new or we already have a COA?
It's new. We did one mid-year twenty twenty-two.
Uh, other one is, is for our benefits when you have a city employee retire. Are we paying, um, insurance? I think, so they don't have that option, okay.
They have Cobra, but other than that, no.
Not at this point.
How's it?
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, oh, go ahead.
I just have a question about services to the county. Are we increasing those fees?
So, you're talking about on the EMS side?
Yeah.
So, um, we use, oddly enough, a DFW inflationary CPI, um, every year. And so, um, it's not just the medical part, but it's overall goods and services is the way our contract is written. And so, we use that inflationary factor every year. Um, we'll check that to see what it came out in June. In May, it was like five-point-one.
Percent?
Uh-huh. In twenty-three, it was right at five. Um, so. Yeah, unless, it depends on what June comes back. So, we'll, we'll wait until the last minute. In fact, we will wait probably until July because the county's a little bit behind us in doing their budget. Um, just from a timing standpoint, they don't have the same constraints we have. So, um, we work with Tanya on that. And as soon as we land on, okay, this is, we feel like this is the latest number we can get, then that's the number we give the county. But yes, there's a CPI attached to that, um, and built into the contract. And then, as you know, that, that contract is coming up, um, as well in twenty twenty-four.
Right.
So, we'll be working toward that.
Okay, thank you.
So, sure.
On page thirty-two, about other identical priorities. With the ordinances that are being proposed, I just want to clarify, is this a list of just general priorities or are those ordinances going to need to do somehow with the budget?
So, like I said, some of these have budget impact and some of them don't. Um, I just really recapped what you guys gave us at council retreat to say, we realize what you identified as your top priorities, these were them. Some of them have no budgetary impact, some of them do, but they stay on our radar all the time as far as things that we're working on, um, every day to make sure we're getting through the priorities that were set to us.
So, all of these have like our little dots?
Yes.
I'm just going to make one, one note.
Yes, okay.
Every single one of them were included except the one about the city council reconfiguration, from what's even for the public.
Well, I'll, in, in fairness, these were from a snapshot that I got like yesterday. So, I don't, I will just tell you that if it was on there, I didn't see it. I just literally copied and pasted. These, this isn't my made-up, um, routine, this trickly came from there. So, I don't know if these are organized by number of dots, I don't, I don't know. This was pushed back to me from the retreat, um, as a list in order of priority. So, I pulled them just from order of priority, so it wasn't, um, if it was off of there, it was inadvertent. So, yeah, copy paste from a list. And as I said, I really included these more for informational because a lot of these don't have budgetary impacts. Just more letting you know, you know, they're on a list. And the list, honestly, was like two pages long. We just pulled the ones with the most dots because the list was really long. There's no way we could get them all.
That is interesting, only one of them out of all of them that had dots on it was not on here.
Well, I don't know.
Everybody was on the only one that fit dots on it, but still, I, I never said two of those.
Yeah, I can't answer that. But I do have a full list and I can assure you, if it was on the list, it's on there. I have like a two-page list. I just pulled the ones that were at the top, just stuck up to the top priority, that's how I pulled them.
Okay, anything else, council? Anybody? Um, I am delighted that we are talking so much about the future of our finance. Uh, we have not been doing that in the past.
I mean, there's been COVID. And lots of things have entered into that and even previously. But, uh, I, I appreciate that. I also appreciate that you are taking staff and, and they're looking at the whole picture, not just their individual departments. Because I think that suddenly you become part of the, the whole picture. You're not just that individual. And I think that makes a difference in, uh, realizing that, and, and you do realize, but suddenly it, it takes on a little different look, so I appreciate it.
Change of office for a day.
About that, yeah. We'll let someone just, yeah, we'll switch around for a week and see what happens. But it, it really has been helpful and we have a really good group, I feel like, that we've kind of gathered, um, over the last year and, and everybody has a little bit different perspective and a little bit different input. And, and sometimes people come up with something that you never would have thought of. So, that's been, it's been a good process for me. I know it was a lot of work for departments to go out there and pull all of their inventory and assets. And, and we're not even close probably to where we need to be at a hundred percent. I think it's going to take us a couple of years, but the focus is there. I can definitely say that, and I think everyone has bought into the process. And, um, we've actually been able to tick off a couple of those smaller dollar items, um, that were on there that were like, this is coming up pretty soon, we can do that, let's do those. And so, um, we're really just trying to prioritize how we take care of, um, them and what level and how do you fund the balance, so a lot more work to come on that.
I think it's good and I also think it's very, very good. We are, we are strong, we're healthy, uh, and this is all going to be very positive as we, uh, bring in a new city manager. So, um, it's going to be a very, very positive thing. And, um, it's, um, sometimes I don't think we realize how blessed we are and, uh, when it comes to our sales tax and some other things. And, uh, so, uh, it's all, it's all very good. And many thanks to you and to all of you for, uh, being a part of that. We appreciate it very much.
And again, if anyone has questions, we'll happy to talk through the details. I know this is a lot of high level, but there's a lot of moving parts. Um, but definitely happy to sit down and talk, you know, through a little bit deeper details if you want to. And I think I can speak for everyone to say, if you have questions about departmental things, you know, reach out to those directors. I don't know anybody who doesn't teach me something, um, on a daily, weekly basis, um, just simply by reaching out, asking questions. So, um, we definitely encourage that communication so that we're all on the same page when it comes time to make decisions.
Thank you for that and thank you for all that you do. So, uh, anything else?
We do have an executive session for you.
We do, right? So, would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'm going to go to executive session under sessions five-five-one-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. At eleven forty-five, we will recess into, excuse me, executive session.
Maloney, you want, I, I found what you're talking about.
There we go. All right, it is one fifty-two and we will reconvene into a regular session. Uh, we have no, uh, information or, um, news to come out of executive session. So, at one fifty-two, we will adjourn city council. Thank you all.